Go si sigeleli Africa. Malu pagañisú pondolwayo. Yizwa imitandaso yechu. Go si sigelela. Tí na lusapolwayo. Murena buluka si chabasa Jesu. Uferiserintwalima tzwéñe. Usibuluke u. Si buluke si chabasa Jesu. Si chabasa South Africa. South Africa. Ey di blofanonse yemel. Ey di diptefanonse. Va di kranse anforche. Sounds the call to come together. And united we shall stand. Let us live and strive for freedom in South Africa outlet.
Thank you. Honorable members.
Malukarona ato tla kha.
All those who are in attendance today.
Le vothe baba kilen ko pa no nyarona hunpiyeno.
From political parties.
Kona le ma koko adi politiki.
Civic organizations.
Le ma fapa ama afaroka neng.
Organized labor.
Erenaleme kha tro e melamba diri.
And traditional authorities or traditional councils if we have them here.
Mo koleba councilara kosa baite lidipili basi zo hai lohoro bate infano.
Greetings to you all.
Re alamohela lotle.
My name is Nolita Nobongwana, the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Lina lakaki Nolita Nobongwana meke zwa ko portfolio committee ya editirolo sa chaba mo kolema fara taka.
I am from the Eastern Cape.
Ke zwa kwa province ya kapabu kaba.
Deployed by the African National Congress.
Meke rumetso fano ke African National Congress.
And then I will ask the honorable members that I'm with today to introduce themselves.
Ki kyo ko pa maluko ana nglin na fano hunpiyenu ya nahoroba iti zisiko reki bo nebo ma.
But just before we do that, I would like to speak to those that just came in. Can you please ensure that this side is filled in? And then the first two rows are filled in.
Re ko pa horaka tze tze ba ilu ho neba horo hamotengha holo. Eh lu sutelinkamo molémen oka. Fa meritro gene me la eme bedi ya ditilo esadula ba twa eva eva harie.
Can all those that just came in fill, ensure that this side is filled in? And this row is filled in?
Eh diran jalo ba kha etso lotla tze nditilo tze disata nindibulehi lese di kafa pili retla samola o o fahari.
Okay, honorable members. Good morning, everybody.
Di melamba kha etso.
My name is Samantha Graham-Mare.
Na ken na Samantha Ren-Mare.
I'm a member of the Democratic Alliance.
Ki wale koko la Democratic Alliance.
And I am a member of the Portfolio Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Kelelo kola Portfolio Committee ya editirolo sa chaba lema fara taka.
And I come from the Eastern Cape, from a town called Chawfrenet. Welcome, everyone.
Meke zwa kwa kapabu chabalina na kozwa ko drokong e biduang hori ki yote nech. Ra le boha.
Good morning, everybody.
Di melang lotle.
I am Madeleine Hittlin.
Meke na Merlyn Hittlin.
I'm also from the Democratic Alliance.
Mele na ke wa Democratic Alliance.
I come from Midrand in Chawteng.
Ke zwa mo chautemo kwa Midrend.
And I just want to say thank you to everyone who's come out today to air their views about this bill.
Me ki ri ki ba tla koleleba halo tla voli kilefa no fahotla kha tla risa ma ikuto alo na kamolauka ka nga waro.
Abuseni.
Di melamba kha etso.
Bitarame metim mashele.
Na ken na remashele.
From the African National Congress deployed in the National Assembly.
Ke zwa kwa African National Congress meke rumetso fano fati kua no bo sa chaba.
Representing the African National Congress from Bushbuck Ridge.
Kozwa ko Buckback Ridge na ke mo emedi wa African National Congress.
Di melamba kha etso. Yo buanfa ke matapelo siwi sa kozwa ko pating ya Economic Freedom Fighters. Kelelo lokula Parlamenta Konational Assembly kelechapele lokula Committee ya Public Works and Infrastructure. Ka tla ho ke tla ha ku kimbalin northern Cape.
Sanbonani.
Di melamba kha etso.
Ga ma lindi wemchobo. My name is Lilwemchobo.
Lila lakaki lona leo.
Eh ngilunga lale komiti.
Kelelo kola komiti.
Ngistuka kwa zulunadan.
And then na ke zwa ko kwa zulu natal.
Ngitunywa African National Congress.
So ke rumetso lenaki African National Congress.
Yep.
Ra le boha.
Sanboni.
Badume ba kha etso.
Kamalumthosi siwa ra ngumalo. Eh ngistuka kwa zulu nadan. Ki deploy I F P. Mingwa ra ngongo.
So I can hear you at all.
Good morning.
Badume ba kha etso.
My name is Wayne Fring.
Lina lina meke Wayne.
Member of the African Christian Democratic Party.
So ke wale lokula African Democratic Party.
Serving the ACDP at the National Legislature.
Ke diralamo ACDP mo koleba kota pe mo lau ya ro.
Also a member of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee as well as Department of Trade and Industry.
Me chapeken se kelelo lokula komiti ya editirolo sa chaba lema fara taka.
Glad to have all of you here. Have a blessed day.
Re leza hori ekar lekan na lele za zileli tumedi sa.
Good morning, everyone.
Di melang lotle.
I'm Sharon Van Scalvik.
Na lila lakaki shaw Van Scalvik.
I'm a member of the African National Congress.
Kelelo kola African National Congress.
Deployed to the National Assembly.
Ke rumetso iti kua no bo sa chaba.
And I'm a member of this Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Kelelo kola komiti eno ya portfolio ya editirolo sa chaba mo kolema fara taka.
And I'm coming from Appington in the Northern Cape.
Me na ke zwa kwa Appington kwa Northern Cape.
Thank you very much.
Ya le boha.
Sanbonani.
Di melamba kha etso.
Ikamalamu Elfaswa Mathebula.
Eh lina la meke Elias.
Elfas Mathebula.
Elvis Mazobolani.
Elfas Mathebula. Eh ngililunga le parlament. Eh nipinde ngibe istunywa se African National Congress.
Ke zwa ko parlamenteng mebe la chapeki rumilwa lenaki African National Congress.
In llangano ya bandu.
Ilengmo kha troa batu.
Eh nipinde futi ngibe ilunga la le komite zogwenzomsebezi obalu leka khuluna mlanga.
Ya bo. Ri ti bela ho ba lele fano kota horesa komiti eno eitlenho idira tiro e bo tro kwa ho lohika. Ra le boha.
Thank you, honorable members. Amongst us, we have Honorable Bishop Dalton Adams, who is the member of the provincial, who is the member of the Chawteng Provincial Legislature. And also the provincial Chairperson of ACDP.
Erenalelo lokoma hara kha ro na. Ilenlo lokula kota pe mo lau ya ro na ya mo chouting. Eh mo ho lelo lokula komiti enwe eleo na chaper riu ma kilen ri ba tla ho ba ama kalaka diya tala zo peidi.
We'll also introduce other honorable members from other political parties as they come in.
Retla luizisi maluko amanwe arona ato tla kha ba tla banze ba tse na ba ma koko amanwe.
And any other councillors that we have amongst us today.
Le ba councilara bape ba ernan lebo no hunpiyenu ya.
And traditional leadership and royal councils if we have any.
Mo koleba councilara baso hosii leba etidipili leba se cho baba kanapa na ting hunpiyé.
Thank you. We are here today as the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Re kilifano hunpiyenu ya ka Portfolio Committee ya editirolo sa chaba lema fara taka.
To seek your views and comments on Bill Number 23 of 2020.
Kota horuwa ma ikuto alo na nditwa elo ga molauka kwa kaka wa wa 23 2020.
The Exploitation Bill.
Ilen molauka kwa wa wa kapo ya ditu.
A bill which seeks to repeal Act Number 63 of 1975, the Exploitation Act.
Ki molauka kwa wa o ilohoro obatahu diro lo la molau o salengho tromila wa Number 75.
And an act which was adopted by the previous government, the apartheid government.
Ne ja ka haritse ki molau one wa tromia ki puso ya na ko efiti le ilin puso ya apartheid.
And as such, it doesn't talk to what the constitution of this country that was adopted in 1996 says.
Me chautsa ma isane ka ho pele molau te wo one wa tromia mona kenyarona ka 1994.
A bill which seeks to have uniform standards.
Ki molauka kwa wa o ilohoro ma ikela loa ora ke ho buluka teka teka no fahara kha batu.
That ought to be used by the expropriating authorities.
O tla bo ngudirisiwaki ba to baba na nditata tza ho kapa ditu.
When they expropriate property for public purpose or public interest.
Ba tla be ilohora ba kapa ditu tze nize hori didirisweki ma loko asa chaba hoza didirisweki puso.
And when necessary.
Me faho trokecha.
Neal compensation may be used.
Ba to baba kanapa duela kaza ba kapisiwadiyata.
For exploitation of property for public purpose or public interest.
Faho sa na ho katwa ya ditu tze bo na hori didirse duela maluwa asa chaba hoza didirisweki puso.
So feel free to express your view without fear of favor.
Ka jandro ko pa horo loske wa chaba lubue ngatsosolo ho ma ikuto alo na.
Whether you support or oppose the bill.
Me tla lo sa horo alo ai amo keela kozza lohanana le yo ne.
We are here to listen to your views.
Refano kota horuwa ma ikuto alo na.
As we all know that when the governing party took over in 1994.
Ya ka puso e busan e salanyakroyaka 1994.
One of the cornerstones was that.
Solosengsa bo tro kwa ilaya na hori.
It will always seek the public's views.
Re ba tla horuwa ma ikuto ama loko asa chaba.
On any laws that will be made.
Mo kaha molau ope fe la o ilohoro rilerao tro ma.
Because previously.
Kaleba kala horo mona ko e fiti le.
Laws were made without seeking public views.
Me lau ene e tromia inzeno horuwa pele ma ikuto abatu.
And those laws disadvantaged a lot of people of South Africa.
Me me lau ewo hayakaya tsa ra bundi diwa ma Africa borosenke.
And today, our democracy is founded on consultation.
Me hunpiyenu ya na me lau ya ro na pele e tromia e te lo mo ho rin twanze ruke pele ma ikuto alo na.
We are therefore here to consult you on this bill.
Ka jalo refano kota horuwa di kagolola no tza lo na le ro na ma ikuto alo na.
All those that would like to speak.
Boke baba ba tla hunguwa se we.
You will be given only three minutes.
Lo tla newa mezo tze ilimera ro fe la.
To state your view.
Horo o tla lo sa ma ikuto ahaku.
Please indicate your name.
Ka jalo re ko pa horo u ubue linala kahu.
And the organization, if you are coming from an organization.
Le mo kha tro o u eme langha ilohoro u zwa ko mo kha tro ope.
State whether you support or you oppose the bill.
O tla lo sa horo ah molauka kwa onu o wa amo keela kozza ohana na le wo ne.
And the reasons thereof.
Enene u bo tla lo se lema ba ka ati.
If you exceed the three minutes.
So ha mezo tze yaha we e mi raro e we tze.
We will indicate to you and stop you.
Retla ho bon cha raho ne su supe bereho e misa horo skatlo du ubue.
So please try to present your views within that allocated three minutes.
Ka jalo tze tze diran horu lubue ma ikuto alo na mo mezo tze ngi e mi raro e we neywe.
Thank you.
Ya ra le boha.
You are all welcome in this meeting.
Lotle wa meke zo ka diya tala zo peidi.
We will start on that side.
Re tlo kusimola kafamole me.
Can you please raise your hands?
Re ko pa horo obatahu buwa atso lezele cho.
The first row.
Eh rugua ka row yancha ne yancha.
So number one, I want the first row, the first row.
So ra ba tla yanca fe la pele row ege leka havi filile bo da.
The first row. So that will be our number one.
So renali number one.
And number one comes and sits in the chairs.
So then how's number one?
And then if there is no other hand, they will come to the second row.
Ta horo kona nditwa buwa kulu na ratamo molengwa bope iti ya no.
Can you please raise your hands in the second row? This will be our number two.
Oh number two ndate.
So if there are no hands, we pass that row and we're not coming back.
So hai lohoro kusna ma cho hori fitile momole olududu mo ho deka ro kha lo re buela mo ho lo.
Okay, going to the third row.
Jano re momolewa bo ra.
Any hands in the third row?
Ah ko na le ma cho.
Yes, that is our number three.
Eh ona ona number three.
No other hand?
Ah ko na ma cho ama we moro we eh.
Okay, we're coming to the fourth row.
Rea fe ta re mo ho ya bo ne jano.
Yes, number four.
Na number four.
Eh number five.
Le number five eting.
Please, when we are, please come to this side.
Re ko pa horo ilue me lutla ka momole wo. Osna wo lo kusne.
Yeah. Number six, yes, number six.
Le number sixi re ko pa o tla kako row is number two.
Okay, and then we're coming to this row.
Jano re mo ho number ya bo tano.
Number seven.
Number seven emma.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Number nine.
Number nine.
And number ten, the red T-shirt.
And then ka sekipa sa sihibi reki number ten.
We will come back and finish this row.
So ra tla buela kapa momole ono.
All those, can our security assist us? All those that are coming in must come to this side. The rows that we have passed, we're not coming back because we gave you the chance to raise your hand so that you can speak. So we're moving.
So re nele cho lo yaha horo lubue ilu tze leze ma cho kara kha lo re buela. Mo mele ngeli duze mo ho yo.
Di melamba ho lo. Di melamba ho lo. Lina lakaki Maikelma Borda geta ra goma Khanisbeke gomo Khanislik. The bill is a agudi. Agudi ma la ni le se beka di bini tze. Di bini tze kubiwa kazoni tze. Di bini we but they are not used. As you can see, hona nun ki representama Khanisbeke. Renali diose lo horo re la kazono goma Khanisbeke. But when coming oray Parlamenta Legislature di na li mitini. Diose leli huana ro na goma Khanisbeke hadi zaxali. Diose di zezelohora la di bua parli di follow up. If you like a share with the infrastructure, eh zaxalo goma Khanisbeke. Can you please help us? Thank you.
Ga ko pa, so ra kha etso. Ra ona buwa fati ko pa lina lakha kwa tze tze kwa ra fana na ha.
Maikelma Borda from Khanisbeke.
So my name is Maikelma Borda from Khanisbeke. And I just want to briefly state and say that when the parliament comes here, the things that you are talking about are actually not even happening in Khanisbeke where I'm coming from. You say things and none of these things are happening at all. We don't have any sort of infrastructure in Khanisbeke. So if you can please see to that, thank you.
Eh muleni ikamalamu chashko leliso. Di buwa kana apa koe hotela. Um. Speaker, Chairperson. Masibonu wokfiga kwe. Eh nukcha, eh nditse nukchashko leliso, I'm from Isango. Eh di melaba sa. You see speaker? Hey, Chairperson. Di pointo kuti tinasiu Isango yes, I support that. Eh susungutabata. Speakers, final so sneta man, eh jenge parlamenta apa in Khanis. Number one, si nama, si nama rural areas. Si nama plot about sixty hour. But la ma ploti la una ama private um. So sabuza kuti ngayakaneza nizo sneta na. Oguti la ma private land asa mukali like monga wo mataraltu wo mahakort. You'll find these private um plots. So how can the department can help us? Right now here in Chivukali, there's a lot of open spaces. So when it was over the speaker of Khanisit, unfortunately, he decided. But names that had that message, you said, "Khanisit, do you say? What do we do about these open spaces in Khanisit?" It's enough. So se kela kuti nisna ten speaker about this thing. And the speaker tena in Khanisit, as you know. As we know in Khanisit. Lama boom, and that's what you're saying, Abangshofe. Abangshofe de advocating our people every day. Baba lasalestrati. Di wasa bateta kuti la ma private land, eh landa. Nowa, nozunia tinasiu Bu Isango. Oguti ni tengertu yomsha and uwa ni tengselo ne. So that is so hasa kuti nati so tengamara si saifuni lepe. Eh Chairperson. Lepe la ki William Byer Williams said, "Please don't say it's events." Because he has compromised. I'm therefore saying, Chairperson. Di kela kuti, di vanu kuti ke isan in Khanisit, we shall no maspaloa ra. Kono woku er orient, there's a place where to orient by Khanis. I want to understand funding that I need. I know I got a sign on it because I want to abandon that. That person will be under that plot. Oguti nengasa, eh za ama, eh blawa kuu mara, eh za ban. And it is a lot eh, more than a year eh, something in Khanis. Maybe the church farm. But our people, they never drink. I mean, I want to understand about train, the blood church farm. So all these issues, so I can do some eh, eh Chairperson. Di kela nisa nino so address. So Isango, you know, design, we will need to be. And we will need to be no maspaloa we. But as Isango, we support the people. Thank you.
My name is George Koliliwe. I'm from Ward 11, representing Sambro. Thank you so much, Parliament, for coming here to this place. I'm here representing our community. As Sambro, we do support this goal. However, we need your assistance here in Khanis City because there are rural areas here and there's a lot of plots, which are just open plots. And there are no people who are using those plots. And there are also plots which are privately owned. Therefore, we need your assistance. There are white people who are evicting, evicting black people and now they end up on the streets. There's also land that is owned by white people, is privately owned. We also need assistance with regards to our municipality because they, we need, they don't care about the people here in Khanis. Also, there is a farm there where people are able to work, but there's no training for our people to be able to work on those farms. Also, I would like to request Parliament to do our way with the William Byer Williams sale though. We really do support this school in Sambro, but we need your assistance here to fix our municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, my hollow. Eh kelewa kelewa horo iniki piluena po ka sesewa. Eh meha kelewa ke na, na ba hollow ke ke na let's kalo seseseto na leva tuwa ba ko community ya me. Balla ka sesewa ka haritse kori kuka eh ro na. Lo na nun ya na, ipulela ha okampu tza hori ngami. Le fatse la ro na lo unwa gi government ke ngasoka ra di karerelebe koi ansai we bata. So the Kodak City seems like relasty. Eh yen sin twankai ere feize. Kansela otadina kote di mu ko ro na. Me yara remona kanaku ehu sometimes silo ne ata ha gatuiweki. Eh di ma security akaha we ba ma Khanisiti. Le ma body samosite. So it seems like relasty. Eh hona lebanababa angomache isini mitu letse kwa ha ohaye unte stene. O shebele TV. O kana huigeleza te o kana wonsa slicea buroto ichizi mo fridji mole. Rona ha wadozeo hadi kana kale. Oka milegi tama eh, six kilometer, ke ho cha. Ke ho cha ja akta wa tza kesna, aki tza ho cha ja me ido antsara po, meke fe la po, meke sala kela motope. So ndwenne ngi ba tla huizti, ne ngi ba tla huizti lo hori. Ah lepatse, Black Elea Orient Hills. I went under government, eh reki le o kuetza hala. Ki di last flash fe la, ki di strike, ki ho kueti, eh croson ho kueti. Di koloi tava tu, tu di complaints, tu di complaints, si dia sengera. Ha hun, ha hun kueti wa limina. So kis kalo, kis kalo, sa tze la. Ki fe la, ki fe la folia, three minutes eh me sa fe la ba hollow mare. Amanji.
Eh, my name. So my name is Tumelo Usimane. I'm one of the people who are crying, complaining a lot. Not only me, but quite a number of the members of the community. In short, I'd love to say, we actually don't know where we are in these processes when it comes to the land issue. We don't know whether ANC does care enough, does care a lot. Because the people who are supposed to be helping us, for example, people such as the councillors, the mayors whom we have, are the people whom we saw only once in a while when we got some complaints that we want to unburden ourselves onto them to talk to them, eh them exactly what we are crying about. So now, sometimes when we have identified a certain land that we want to use for one or two little things, as we believe that we might sometimes be allowed to do that, you find a police and a police van there. So we are always being chased away. And sometimes also, we have to walk quite a number of kilometers, something like up to six kilometers, maybe just to find some open land that we can do things that we love to do just for some entertainment. And sometimes having to go across the boundaries. The problem and the experience is that now we are going to end up being marked, maybe having your, your cellphone be taken away from you. So we are grappling with these kinds of problems, Chair. So really, I reject the bill because of the problem.
...into the custody of the state. We are concerned here today that expropriation will want us to make improvements on. This legislation that must tell us today and now. How the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation. How the state is going to expropriate land? How the land is going to be distributed equally to everyone? How the right to use the land is going to be protected? But since you are here today, you must know that our positions remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will be able to address colonial land dispossession and the legal of our party. We do not give you, parliament, a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and it should not be for sale. This expropriation B is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of the black people and will not resolve the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, build businesses. And this expropriation B is not going to help us in doing any of this. No legislation is about the constitution. We do not, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on process, on this process, when there is a process to amend the constitution. And thereafter, amending the constitution. This commission must, no must bring as a legislation informed by the constitution. Thank you.
Uh, Tumelamba Kholo. Kita Dikunow, Kizakofa Shville. Mo Sika Yatwisa na, Erere Ketsanga nineteen ninety-six, Kiura Development. Now, Putu Akaki. Ika mo kanya moroko oto. Kha plasi ekiwa, kona le bato, bane bana how, bagerakela, lila lili, unaplasa inu. So bato bau, kanyek ba, ba involvia in, in buying of the farm. Banale mabi ika, basanta ne batusila babam babo. For example, yesterday, our deputy chairperson, Uila Tusa Mungwe, ona bati lo kudira finerally today. Bato bau, kaba anewa moroko oto. Kudira janjalu baxi, so bato bau bato ka tuso very urgently. The farm was bought from nineteen ninety-six. We still only druna, bato bai longkorre, karibanga baplasi. They need to be helped, bato ka konsensitie. Kanya bo beti. Kona le ma hati akarele pharama dele tawulia, ah onua iki di, iki di mine, kizakomera kona. Um, there are people by long for a minee, itroheti ma fati, aman abone bi plasi tedi. This person remutwisa from an organization NGO, Ebiza Rural Legal Trust. Now, minee imurete, akokomele plasi eu from his own pocket. And kaba mutwisi ka sepe, kaba mu filiti tlaya kura, aberekisale hatsileu. Bamo nere halati tla kore, aberekisenu, mara kaba monela ti tla kuberekisale hatsi. Kanya bo raro ya bo heloke kore. Ama hatsi hatsi wa, mostly mo kanyenyatimu, kan tla kure ki mulimu, anelu ebali mi, aska anelu abato bau, basanta de banale pono ya kulema. Let the land be given to farmers, not people who are ambitious to farm. Thank you.
Greetings, my name is Tati Kuno. My question is relating to when farms are sold. In most instances, there are people who are resident in those farms. And there is no remuneration that is given to these people when farms are sold. There is no consultation that is made with the people that were already residing in these farms that are being sold. These people are not given any compensation whatsoever. Another question or issue is that there is land that is owned by mines. There are farms or land that has been abandoned by mines when they leave or they, uh, they stop mining. There is an incident where a mine asked an individual to look after the land without any incentives to that particular individual, where they had to fork out the expenses from their own pockets to look after the, the farm or the land. And in those instances, the mine asked the people to look after the house without giving them the right to work on the land or to use the land. The last issue that I want to raise is that land should not be given to people who have an ambition to farm. It should be given to people who are farmers, not people who are still contemplating that they want to farm. Thank you.
Tumelamba Kholo. Eh, obuanki bi tumelosileke, kizakilimuka Khiso from Democratic Alliance. Eh, kanya lefati, kaki tumelanini leona. Because, kha oliva le, kanya lefati, people are taking it in a broader spectrum. Kitlo rata kusimulla kalefati kibuakalone from mo kidulanteng. Kilebeleti lese emosa kona nu yana mo country nyaruna. South Africa kona nu is in crisis. People are not working, meaning that kaki dumela kure lefati leteiwe. Inlo ekina moyone today is gonna be taken from me and be sold, and then I'll be renting the house. Kona nu yana relebeleti lefati, oku dimu, kadi ploto, kadi plasi. Karilebelele fati from within roona. How many people molekeshin in baba sa beriken, how many people baba kolota mo kali siti? Ban longkorri di areasi, hadi hobbe, meaning that it gonna start karuna mo, moma keshining. The very same mulau, orasa obating, goes back to mulau aparte. Oi longkorri gonna be listed, renali di payment, re-renta kape di, because di nzo zaruna, di tlebe di teiroi. Country kaha etiruetan in onnamu hi ri momoto. Another point is, lefati, leharika le, radumela kore leteiwe. Leharika teiwa lefati hariko benefite lana. As much as le kona nu yana leson benefited, if lefati lena leteiwa lifu abatu. A kona nu yana, kona le development e diruwa, abatu ba trainiwa kore. The minute the mulau o, o pasa, bato will be able to farm, bato will be able to do whatever for themselves. Are we empowering the people right now for the, for preparation of kama mulau o teiwa ki government yaruna? Somebody from America will be taking most of Africa. Atlo fuwa lefati, ali ona lefati leu, coming with the brothers it's a harike, batala monifati laru. Somebody from, eh, eh China will be coming monifati le laru na le, batala ona lefati. What is my benefit, mo kure ngife government elefati, ali te, ali laule? I, I totally disagree le mulau o. Mulau ona is totally, eh, eh, not benefitable for the South Africans. It's going to benefit for the few that will be there, kanako eu. For my, for my age, I won't allow that because I'm looking at my children, I'm looking at my grandchildren and the coming generation. I totally, totally disagree with this law. Because, uh, uh, nobody is going to benefit. I can be given a plot, I can be given, what empowerment did I get? Huh? What skill did I, I receive? If anybody right now can tell me, kore, there's any development around Khiso, mo bato baripuanka farming thing. Mo bato baripuanka kore, kaki nalukomoe so, komoe so kiya mashi, komoe so kiya nama, komoe so eka in. There's nothing, people are just, eh, eh, singing a song ya kore, lefati lifu e bato. Lefati lifu e bato based on what? Lefati lifu e bato based on what? So, kaki tumelanini le mulau teu ona, was South Africa, I totally disagree. Oh, thank you, sorry, my time is up, very, thank you.
Mister Chair, I, uh, ma'am Chair, my name is Buittumelosileke. I disagree completely with this bill. I disagree completely with this bill because it is approached, uh, from a very broad spectrum. My concern is that we look at it from a top view position. We should look at it from the ground level. Because I anticipate that we will lose our houses, we will lose our lands, and we will end up renting. Because when the government expropriates our houses and our lands, we will not be owners anymore, we will end up renting, eh, land and houses as it was during the apartheid days. The question is, who will it benefit? Are we getting any training? Are we getting any empowerment on how to use the land that has been expropriated? I foresee a situation where the government expropriates land and we hand over the ownership and the control of the land to the government. And Americans and Chinese will come to own the land at the expense of the locals. The question is, how will this land appropriation benefit the locals? What skills are being given to us so that we can know how to use the land? We are just singing the song of land expropriation, but we are not training the people eh, to give them the skills on how they should use the land. On that note, I completely disagree and oppose the Bill of Land Expropriation.
Eh, Kalidumedes. Lina lakake, bule, ni vayamathaba. Eh, let me start by saying, I've always believed that one of the reasons why we succeeded in achieving a peaceful negotiated settlement in this country, it was because we acknowledged that South Africa is a very much diverse country. Eh, so whatever we're discussing here today must be for the benefit of all the people of South Africa, be it black, white, colored, or Indian. So Chairperson, eh, the long and sho- eh, the, the long and short story of this today is that land reform is purely another service delivery failure by the government of ANC. So when we look at the success stories of the land reform, the success and, and the failure of the land reform. What we know is that in twenty-seven years, ANC have already succeeded in land redu- eh, land distribution. The only, their success rate in twenty-seven years is only less than ten percent. So, another thing is that we know that, eh, one of the chairpersons of land reform was, eh, our former president, Kalma Motlanti, where he stated categorically about the constraints of, eh, distributing the land. The first reason was that it was a, eh, lack of political will from the lo- from the ruling party. Number two, corrupt officials. Number three, diversion of budget to the elites. Number four, lack of training and capacity. Number five, of which is very much important to me, is land for friends. We know that, eh, some of the examples, two, I'll give two of the examples when I, when I'm talking about if you are not politically connected within the government of ANC. You're not gonna get anything. Tandi Muri say there's a case about, about her. She was not even supposed to benefit with that, eh, eh, farm. So number two, we know that there's also a staff member in Lituli House. His name is, eh, Velile President and his friend, eh, Moses, eh, Bosho Money. They bought the, eh, the ANC bought them a farm for ninety-seven million. So you can imagine what is happening there. So Chairperson, if there's anything that needs to change in this country, it's the government of ANC. So section, section twenty-five o- of the constitution must be cast in stone eh, in the constitution of South Africa. I thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Can I come closer? Can I go here? Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, everybody is here standing and seated. My name is Imran Sirat, I'm from Lenezia. Uh, I object to these, uh, to the, to the bill. The objection or comments relating to this document published should leave a frightening feeling to the citizens of South Africa. A thought to consider is our history. We have come out of, where we've given individuals without limits, the, the, give, given leaders or individuals permission to continue without limits to abuse many. Uh, I'm gonna try and go as quick as possible through this and hand this to you as well. Uh, while the first person that might be appointed as the Minister of Expropriation, we don't know who the next person in line would be and how they would be in terms of their ethics and behavior towards this country. If the current situation is anything to be judged by, considering the inquiries of SOE self-enrichments and corruption, that seems to be the order of the day. Uh, going back to the draft that we have, that you've given us, I'd like to point out that to the layman, section four, delegation of assessment, assignment of minister of powers, you've got two points on that. Four point one, subject to four point two. The minister may either generally or in relation to particular properties or in relation to particular case, delegate or assign to an official of the department any powers or duties conferred or imposed to him or her in terms of this act. Your second point on this draft bill that you have is that it clearly states on the first few words, the minister may not delegate or assign. Now, if you're looking at just that, if you couldn't consecutively put that piece in place, the layman I did, understanding this is gonna be very confused as to how this is going forward. You couldn't relate just that two points, and that confuses the layman on the street to understand that your bill on the one, just section four says the minister can, on the next line says the minister can't. So if you can't get that part properly, how can we understand and take it and understand that your foresight for this entire bill going in future has been looked at and considered? Now, that's just one part of it. Now, the bill is in contradictory to itself, uh, uh, sorry, I pass that. While the bill seems to really look at an old act of sixty-three, the expropriation bill of nineteen ninety, nineteen seventy-five, this act was amended in the Act of forty-five nineteen ninety-two. The amended expropriation bill act of forty-five nineteen ninety-two uses a word in there which is expedient. And that means to expropriate without moral conscience. Pushing this bill forward, looking and drafting through and reading through this bill that we looked at and looked at today time and time again, it gives an independent person, a minister, the power to expropriate not just land. Now, I've heard here a lot of people come forward and say, land for black people. The bill does not make it a racial matter, black people, it's not about race. Unfortunately, the projection that this bill has been put out-
Your time is up.
Okay ma'am, I'll hand this over to you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are in this row. We were here, yeah, there was a head at the back, he's no longer there. Okay, you are number one. And then we're coming here. Number two, at the back, at the back, number two. Yeah, number three. Number four. And then we're coming to this row. Number five. Number six, number seven. Yes, you are number seven, at the back, yeah. And then this one, this row, yes, number eight. Yeah, number eight. And then we need two more, on the last row, number nine, number ten. Whilst you are still writing them, I've been told that there are people outside who would like to come in and speak. So we'd humbly ask the two rows, the two rows there to, to vacate the hall so that we allow those that are inside to come in. The two there, yes, thank you. We humbly appeal to you. No, you can remain, you can remain. The speaker? We were not aware, no, no, eh, she can't go.
Are, are you done ma'am?
No, the Chair of the Sangko can remain, eh, yeah, the speaker and the Chair of the Sangko. But we have asked that the leaders be introduced-
Recupila kore-
-so that we can introduce them formally.
Recupila kore ba teledi pele bateba itisi wisi muso.
But we are asking these two rows, there are people outside-
Me la mbe diye kore leswelakoncle, row ele ekomo lemengomo tseo, le bapi lengle bone. Recupila kore leswelakoncle, kore baba angwe, bateba kwanakotena, bakuwanakudira, kaza, ditlakishoza bone, babote di pozo. Khatla sala, Speaker Rafela. Kaya utla bakuwa kamudula sitilo.
I know the Chair, this is me.
Mudula sitilo kato kasaala.
Tumelang. Na kina, li shono na Jacob Sikaledi, kuzoa Mirafun City, mo, Sikaledi, Sikaledi. Kuzoa Mirafun City, Carltonville. Eh, Ntchapi le, ekta, lisa. Renale, kutata bo, uva tangore, naha, if, if, if we bat. Sila yo bato ba, naha, tsansi ifwe bato kayo na. Bato bha, haona training ifuambatu. Haona preparation eh, eh, government eh, ilxiti. Ki government waru na, ki runar, rumusapota, maru kupa ore. Ba etse bulneti bau ore, bato baruna ba, ba fuat training. ANC yashasela, ki di political party tedi. Eh, ne, mo, bato banka, bu ele ti badi party tedi. Bato banka di area teu, basa tsanla mudula kuzo. Badula ma, ma, ma filongao. Apula dina, ba, 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 metia tamaka, kama tuabo. Which is very dangerous for, for bato. Or ba, ba filuma filumba, because haona assessment itzuamo, haona valuation itzuamo. Kore, that area is suitable for hutile bato. Bato boro na ki kopa, we must try to understand. Orin, reloka nahab, bakensai. Rabatla hoaha, rabatla ho'lim. The important thing kure santsirilin. Government must speed up the system yawar bat nchuen hufana ekana ha. Oru batwaru na ba honu kusua lapi. Bu kumuso. Mola huruna ridula in the mining area. Mo di mine di na di le di positsi, di position itzeo, itzeo itinfele, tesa itinleto. Renalima tata mo. And eh area eh le mola, hawana di business, hawana niks, santsu utsepefele ulohira mining. After that, hawana ntiwetuwa. Hawana investors teetla mo because everything is about the mine. So, rukupare, that thing, ntiwayo, ike share juha hole, government juhalekalele mo. Likel sharebe juhalekati le kataba ya le fati. Rukhonu bonaruna, di peto ki di fi. Utuse batuba ba nalibuhun ba ho'lim. Renaliba tuwakona ho'lima, mara ba honu share juha, ba honu utuse. Ibaka teetla itinse open, ki honu sebeletascha.
Good day. My name is Jacob Sikaledi from Mirafun City. This problem with the land being given to the people has been ongoing. And the other problem is that the people are not given any training. The government must ensure that it gives training to the people on how to use the land. People stay where they are not supposed to, in places that are not safe. Where they build houses which are flooded because there were no assessments or evaluations done to find out if the land is suitable. People need land, they want to build and they want to farm. Most importantly, they need to farm. The government has to make a system to give people land. In places where mines are not working, that's also a problem. There are no investors because everything is about money. The government must really make a plan to help people who need it. Thank you.
Greetings. Greetings eh to everyone. Eh, thank you very much eh Madam Speaker. My name is Mofugem Pekunelson. I am from eh EFF organization here in eh Gahiso. Our concern is very big. And we have been doing this for many years. Since from twenty thirteen eh we have been talking about the issue of land. Eh, the white minority of this country eh they have and they own the big portion of the land. And the black eh ma- eh majority of this country, they own the small portion of the land. So, for the state or for the government, we told the parliament many a times that they must amend the constitution that says willing buyer or willing seller. Because our black people, they don't have money. Our black people, they are not working. There's no work for our people. But the government and the ANC, they don't listen. We told them many a times that our people are suffering because we were previously disadvantaged by the apartheid government. So now we are in democracy for twenty-five years, but our people still don't work. How can we buy, how can we buy land whereas we are not working? How can we pay tax, the expensive tax whereas we are not working? Our youth are not working. We don't have train, they don't train us. So, this thing, that eh, that this law that says the willing buyer or willing seller, it is, it is obvious, is for white people because they have money. You find someone own land here and he is from UK. Someone is owning land here, he is from America. Because the currency of our country is too small. So Madam Speaker, peacefully so, we ask you. And we, it's not the first time we tell you that you need to amend the constitution so that we can appro- uh, appropriate land without compensation. We cannot buy our own land. The land that was taken from our forefathers, we need that land back. And the, and the state must be the custodian of that land and allocate the land to us equal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Eh, Libisola Gaki Pita Mudise, I'm from the ANC. Eh, I'm also the first citizen of this ward, which is ward eleven. Eh, I'm in support of this bill. Eh, the chapter two of this bill, it will guard the powers of the minister. So my humble request will be, can we please raise eh an ex- expropriation bill committee? That will consist of the MEC responsible for the land and also the mayor. Because the mayor, they're the ones who, who have the constituency. Eh, now, we must identify the land as the local constituency. The land alonging has been sold to foreign people. Now, this land, we must expropriate it but with compensation. The land that has been repossessed from us, along the repositure from the, from our forefathers, during that time, we must take it without a compensation. Eh, the houses, which are the bonded ones, eh, can we please loan a reminder on that bill that day? Eh, people must just only buy a house, not only to buy a house and also buy a land from, from, from that. I've heard the latest speakers, which have eh 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 eh, the beneficiaries eh of Tony Gion or maybe they are commonly known as the DA now. They mustn't come here and mislead our people to say when we expropriate the land, it means now, but what's a romance? That is utter lies. Thank you.
I will, I will only interpret the parts that he said in Sizwana. Pita Mudise, I am from ANC. I support the bill for um land expropriation without compensation. In this bill, chapter two talks about the power of the minister. I propose that we should have a committee that is set up for expropriation that should consist of the MEC, that should consist of the mayor amongst the other stakeholders. We need to identify through this committee land that should eh be expropriated. Or rather, land that was sold to foreigners, that land should be expropriated with compensation. However, the land that was dispossessed from us as a result of the legacy of colonialism and apartheid should be eh expropriated with compensation. People um should also be allowed to buy houses and not the land on which the house is built. Expropriating the houses of the people, that is not true.
Good morning everybody. My name is Ronald Harris. I'm with the African Christian Democratic Party and we do not support this bill. From my perspective, I would like to look at the structure of the administration, the current administration because I don't think this bill considers the imperatives of a developmental state. Firstly, why is this bill eh being promulgated when the evils of the population registration area to monitor and evaluate the municipalities and the authorities when they um use the, expropriate the land? And then how are they going to equitably, humanely um distribute the land? And also, how is it that this bill will stop the opportunities for um corruption and all kinds of malfeasance? Also, how does this bill promote rural development? And take into account urbanization, internal migration, and the wholesale rape of South Africa by people from all, all over the world? So as the ACDP, we say we do not support this bill.
Chairperson, good morning, honorable members and stakeholders. The DRC process failed the majority of South Africans. Land expropriation process, in my view, is also failing the majority of South Africans. In my view, the playing fields should have been leveled long time ago after democracy, nineteen ninety-four. It is said that former president Motlanta said in July twenty nineteen, "If property is not protected by law, society as we understand it today will disappear." Because the kind of anarchy and chaos that would ensue is difficult to imagine. So the ACDP says the problem lies undoubtedly with implementation of the existing policy and legislation. This failure to implement is due to mainly to the incompetence, mismanagement, and corruption. So from an ethical perspective, the ACDP supports orderly land reform. The ACDP would like to emphasize the need for fast resolutions to, to the land issue as land grabs escalate around the country. We must, and I repeat, we must support as many South Africans as possible to gain access to land with title deeds. We support a just, equitable, transparent, and corrupt-free land restitution process believing that when we unite, build, and grow together, it is healthy and it is possible for us to enjoy a safe and prosperous South Africa. Chairperson, the ACDP does not support this appropriation bill as it is. I thank you.
Remember, I am Economic Freedom Fighter. Eh, Chairperson, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution. And then after amending the constitution, this committee must bring a legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submission into parliament public hearings on the land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of all land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on, this legislation that, that must tell us now that the constitution allow, allows for expropriation for all land without compensation. Is this how, is how the state is going to expropriate land? This is how the land is going to be distributed to all equally? And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected? But since you are here as a panel again, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be appropriated, to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial land dispossession and legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find a way to pay for our land that was stolen. Our land is not commodity and it should not be for sale. The land expropriation bill is unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not resolve, and will not solve the challenges of land. Anything that is available to pay for the land must be given to black, small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build eh, to build houses and to build business and expropriation. The, the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution.
Just to conclude, Chair, on his last expressions, he says he doesn't seriously know where the problem is coming from. Because as it appears eh, it's a land issue which cannot be solved or the waiting for it to be solved. But exactly where is the problem? Why cannot it go through? And then of course, he concludes with the last word of saying that it seems like they are not being considered at all.
My name is Wise Mentara. Greetings Chair. Uh, I'm from section twelve of Ambiso. And I disagree with the expropriation act bill because there is no need for such a bill. We've spoken about compensation before. So parliament is coming up with another one now, an expropriation bill instead of returning the land to the people. Um, the parliament should actually work on creating laws which will be aligned with the, with the constitution. Thank you.
Good day, Chair, from parliament. Kakepochiso Dana Mahabe, Kitzwako Mirafun Kukutso. Eh, tabaya lente kile under DA organization or a party. Agidu melani le tabaya lente juu because of renpilele matata amantika tabaya lente. Eh, government eh irifeise since from twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Our fathers bane bali biziba register issue akote batunka le fati. Bali patelo, huvane nevazwa koma fati ngadi frente, anebantua ki government eh apilo kwa. Then, hunu hona le compensation eh ningipatela. Katwendi eh, the former president eh Mister Jacob Zuma wile afana legal tmeelano yahora katwendi nineteen. Batwato fumanadi chelte saboneza ma fati. Only to find that now, when it's twenty nineteen eh la, den kuchenchilo sesu honale land bill. Ilonghore yano ngieza batwore bade confused. Then the other thing, kuhore, how can we regret the fati? On the other side, sesile onua ki batu, balonghore, it's our neighboring countries like eh batwata mobo Zimbabwe, bawam batwa mobo Mozambique. Sesibekile za disama zama, jaka runarule batwamu bakoo Mirafun. Rababone bali bangata because they waste our land kahore sesi babulana, bai buzedi mine itzele, ntsabone moli fati na roona. And the other one, kuhore ana, how can we get the fati, lenonghore sesile damage, like chemical sand mine? Utokona ho, ho, ho jala e moti. And eh, the fati is not all about farming. The fati kela di ntozenga, tazoka hona kudi yaza. And eh, government must come up with a sober mind. They must clean up their mess first before baya kota benya le fati. Because the fati, as it abahore fele, santsirete timotu. Santsirete di lozedi unkonleka le fati, selonghore. We ought to have our own eh businesses, den honofa bacha, honano banale problem eh ya, mesewe. It's reetse di, di business, selonghore. Everybody who can benefit, I create anything out of mo, mo lonale fati de. Honano nakito komo tinguwa kuto, melonghore. We got sinkhole, honano le fati le sinjekile. We got sinkhole, selonghore. How sheba kuto? Eh, the main roadside thing, Apusata Meha because of, the, the mines are damaged there. Since eh, education la roona, then government must come up to rescue us on that situation. And nntengu hapé, ekishabile mbacha, ababereka, otsuka kusé, otualla lore. Hunu kufienua di strata, bai sella goldu, muarona so very rich. Baylo reki sa, and after so reki sa, the foreigners, bona baraka, omoba nembaro. After that, bana baruna, abana niks, bajele chelte nyana yo, aruwa sheba, bona banale chelte. Basama kadukole, badula momantunga very expensive. Kattabaya lonale fati le relebata mbate, ede ento bede. Asuruna batwa benefita, kobe benefita batwata angonle, so ki kupare. The government let not confuse us, abateka solution. Yahore, the fati le, aybanibaba tolete, yamo batung, mayesa yanka lo.
Your time is up.
Thank you Chair, my name is Pochiso-
Thank you, Chair. My name is Pohiso Danna Mahabi. So I'm from Merafun. And right from the beginning, I want to clearly state that I reject the bill because it has been discussed for quite a long time now, in 2013, in 2014, even in 2015. In fact, what has happened is that our fathers and our parents were evicted from some of the lands which they had. And then they were promised that they were going to be actually paid. And then such like payment has never been seen. And then in the long run, for example, in 2019. Before 2019, Jacob Zuma promised the people from whom land had been expropriated or who have been evicted from their lands that they were going to receive some payment. But now come 2019, what happened? They came with another land bill. So that's exactly what the government had done. And so what we want to say is that there are so many, some of our lands which are actually being owned right now by people who are from outside of the boundaries of South Africa, like people from Mozambique, people from Zimbabwe. And one wonders how, how did they actually lend their hands on these? And we want the government to know, please, that the issue of land is not only about farming. There is a lot that we can do with land. So we want the government to please try and clean up their act before expropriating land. They must actually know what is it, what is it to be found in a particular land that is about to be expropriated? Because we know in some of the lands, people are able to find some raw materials that can actually be used to end a living. We would like our lands to be handed over to our young people because they are unemployed and they can actually put them to a good use. I am from Kuzo, which is in Carteville. And most of the lands that we have around there is basically holes. It's land on top, but it's actually an avalanche. It's a hole because of a lot of mines that we have there. There are some people who actually know where to find a good land. And this is something that we see by people who are able to obtain a certain piece of land somewhere. The next thing that you know, they drive very smart cars. They live in mansions because they knew exactly what move they had to take to be able to get to it. So we want the government to be very transparent about this and so that we can actually benefit as well from land that can be expropriated. So we are still waiting even for the promises that were made in the former time. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chair. Libitola kakena Miriam Muhoge, ki member ya the African National Congress, ketsua kova tifimomohali. I'm the deputy secretary of the branch. So I'm here also representing my branch. I am here ki mona, otlahudumala nali bili. Indeed, we are saying as a branch, ah, clause section 25 in the constitution, ebbe amended. Because really we need the development. And we have realized, hore, naku ere zayang, as the African National Congress not taking back this land, it delay ya the service delivery to our people. Because the sooner we get this land before batu barona balapa pelu and bai paya moli fazi leo, mo itisambu tata bahori. In most cases as government, we cannot deliver to them because we are threatened by the owners of those land. Now we are going for local government. The same people who are saying, really no caliphate, are the same people who are going to evict our people, knowing that Rona as the African National Congress, as a caring organization, will take care of those people. So this land must given to us. It must be given to government, known not later, so that government is able to deliver to its people. Thanks.
My name is Miriam Muhoge. I'm a member of ANC, I'm from Ward 5, and then I'm from around Mohali City. I'm a deputy secretary of the branch and I'm here representing the branch. And right from the beginning, let me state very clearly that we as the branch agree and we accept the bill and then as the branch. So we want to say that it's been taken too long now for the government to deliver. So land expropriation has been spoken about. People are hoping for land reform. But the longer it takes, please be aware of the fact that this delays the services. And before the people go out of control, please let's act and do something about it. Because right now, we do have our own lands. Obviously, they are being occupied by some other people. And when we start to check them out and to talk about them, what happens is that we are being threatened by them. Right now, we are at a point where everybody is going for local governments. Basically, the voting. And then these are the people whom we are putting our trust in. So if they can deliver as members of the ANC and actually make sure that land reform does take place, we will be happy. Thank you, Chair.
Nandisuka e 2 and 3, Red Valley Extension 2 and 3. Lapo kona kungana ne ne shopo kona spila ge, ge tugshop. Apo tagu vuka isano vopik, ne zano vopik isabo, kuvalo zonki tugshop. Go ku bendis talalen je no ba, masifunye eloba, le pis yomshaba si sebenzis. Ukwenze la uko ti siwa zukuti, sibe nenutu ko londo le, yuzoyen zukuti. Ku be kwa bantu, abazos sebenza kona ab. Go ku ndivumelanana yo le pilileena uko ti, masini kue umshaba. Koto abenditi i ANC, ayayo de paya parliamente, be mane besitela ngai. Zninti le mi buto ipaya, na yo maba ikaye kengo ba. Ukufela koe ANC, newfela nonke. EFF, UCDP, DA, nonke newfela, is by ANC yod. So mabanga mane be chala chala na kongolos. Diabule, umshaba siya ufuna.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Mfanyelo Pladki. I'm the regional organizer. We should get the land. I agree that our government honestly has worked well in other areas. And today, they say they'll take the land. But now how can they take the land whereas we already have title deeds? This is actually contradictory. So people must not lie and say that the ANC government wants to take the land. I support this bill. I am also asking the government to please quicken our applications for land. I come from Extension 2 and 3. There we have tugshops. And then when there are situations where there are xenophobic attacks, they close our tugshops as well. Please allow us to use that piece of land so that we as well can develop. I do support this bill. Give us the land. The ANC in parliament is not the only one with flaws. If the ANC fails, so will the other parties. That's the UCDP, the EFF, the DA, and so forth. We do want the land. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers. We come to this side now. We improve with that side.
Bahaiso refetelakamule, chakurulele kaka kwa, kokopa baba weja pe kuhore. Baba ki misizan hubua, bai ipakane zanhubua.
Eh, men, the first one.
So, malabancha, men.
The second is, yeah, there, number two. Number three, number four.
So, abasunahukusuparokopa otleka afane, otlele baba tanga kwa, nomo mule, oos, nanditulote bisnambat.
Okay, number five, yeah, number five. I'm just pointing anyone who raises his or her hand now. This is the last group that we are taking in.
Ki roya bufelo felo ere baka nyai, eh, ababa tlenho hubua, bahaiso.
Any other hand?
Ah, honale opeja pe obatla nho hubua, so eh ki abu felo. Honalo opo obatla nho hubua.
We acknowledge the presence of Councillor Dorin Davis, who is representing the Speaker of Mohali City.
Ere amachala, omoga ba be diva rona, wa dibui, e len ba musa khotra, mo e woya makoko arona.
This is the last group. We won't point any other hand. That's why I was asking anyone who would like to speak. So...
Mm, ki adume di sa. ANC, le pootinle. Hakibo ni ki ma, ki di face sa ma buru, pasen saga. ANC, le pootinle, kilo anele ma buru, so ana vili ele eveté. Hakibo ni ki droongo, halina kutolo busuko kana. Ki so kasiile, vinki si sa uti arcii. Hakia fuma na le eto, kilo ana le ma buru, kilo ana la bat. Watuwa ki di bulenle, so ana vili moro lo na ANC. Hakina msobe siliban. Ya regisadu 5,000. 100,000 mol. Ay minilu hukai le fazi le regisadu. Batuwa regina ni kolo ika ma fazi. Uregisadu somasana. Uresu unzu ma bo, batuwa regisadu mol. Mohali, ki waka Mohali. Ki berekes ANC, hakibo na na kere ki kichuma na raton. Ki nse, ki na di li application ki sa uti arcii. Halina kutolo busuko kana. Hakia ya urataka EFF, ubaki bati korapsiye. Korapsi ni emona Mohali, iti le taulo. Hunalia matanka di kia, udi fa omomo la. Uregisadu sa batu maru. Li re ni ituisa kasta baseseso. Halina kutolo busuko, halina rizalo. Wana na ki sukpe si kua, ki holo feze. Hakia sobe ne sobe na baka, ki bereki, libuta non bo. Ne ki sohule. ANC, hakiba tubua kavana, bari kenyadisenta ta mol. Ya gubulaya, till today, han, ne ki di chapese. Haga saba bulua, haga yosan le jo, batuwa shosu mol. Aba pu le jo, kalwa kala ANC. Usirilo anele, usiritzele, uregibatu. Ubusuko. Ubusuko, so ana buru la ki di sesabana, batuwa sa regipita mol. So ana vili regipiti we, eh hatuwa kama utu, taba gun. Batu mu di muteng, ANC ali wono kuli kadi li, di koton sa bana baba ma isikare. Lu otoa kama di, lu otoa kame, kadi nta. Ha iyo ntoa sa febe, ne le sa febe. Uregita ba katsasi kide na. Ki emeka pila ANC, ki le mona kala kamchuma no la, ubaki mona na li. Bana bona ki bi kabona ba. Monamoli li nti, ki Mohali elo ne le momatis. Kilo anele, na batuwa nama, mol le so ana vili. So ana vili ne mesukena. ANC le re, kama taba. Ki asewa le suwa utu mataba. Ha utu kulana le si. Nikne mi ki di so, yonaki mataba. Utu e na uregisadu ma tu, abatu. Ba shosu ki ba sa tuwa bona, ba roana la tu lo yela. ANC Mohali.
Time is up.
Greetings. I just want to say my greetings to Chair. And then I must say this, that for a very, very long time, I've been waging war against the white people. In fact, I may just as well say that I've been waging war against ANC because it has really disappointed me to an extreme degree. ANC is very heartless. They have no mercy whatsoever, in fact, about a person like me at my age. Things are totally out of control here in Mohali City. If there are any lands, they are actually up for a purchase. Imagine something like a 5,000 rent, just for you to have a land. So it's very, very painful when we take a look at the things that are happening here. ANC may be very well be aware, well aware of these things, but they just ignore them as if actually they don't know exactly what is going on. I have no land. As I said, things are totally out of control right here in Mohali City. You people have no mercy. You have no conscience at all. I have no land, and not only me, but even my own kids. We are actually left destitute and simply because of ANC. And this is a serious issue of lands, land that I'm addressing here. I never thought that the day shall come when at my age, I'll have to stand here and actually address the government, address the ANC itself. But please know one thing, that you have disappointed me completely and to an extreme degree. Actually, not only have I fought with the white people, right now, I can simply say I'm waging war and fighting against the government itself, which does not want to bring their promises into fulfillment. We keep on fighting and fighting until we can fight no more. And this is simply because of ANC. In fact, I really want to come back. I'm going to jot some points down. I am not finished with you. I'm gonna come back. I still have to address you ANC. Thank you.
Good day. My name is Spegazeli Mokwadle. A local business person representing ama SMMEs in construction. They brought Iskalosabo in writing. I'm gonna read what is written. As the community SMME, we got a problem with Paul Wilhelmson. He act as a CLO 07, death sites, death sites camps. They decide camps. He has a company. He got police guards, which is our police, SIPF. Police guards by the name Colonel Sitole. He employs, oh. Sorry. Mr. Paul, he employs the foreigners with no working permits. The community report Paul to the police station here in Kahiso. The police did not come to address the community issue. Paul is a CLO. We want to know, where is he from? Ube we ngobani. And si kela oma injalo, kuti si vunyele. Umumunfulo mnyama, gube ngwe le simbeka, normali siti ketela yena. As he represent, especially gule construction ngoba, involene ndagalago. When we close sites, they say singama mafia. They don't look into the problem. Le ama constructors atibana na yo. Ama SMMEs atibana na yo. So bestela kuti ibukelewele yo. Because ngeldele wendega ngakona, ban vbe local. Aba watik sebenda, aban vba ngapandla, ni bole sebatsete over. Aba sa wati kuti ba wati kasha iutia bukute, i-crime iti kwechaga ngani. So bestela logo. Thank you.
I will continue from where she started to speak in Siswate. There is this Mr. Paul. We do not know who put him there. And can we be allowed as black people to be in charge? And we need to be represented in the construction. Because now, if he sits there, how, they keep, if we try to take over, they call us mafias. Can that be conceded? Can our matters be also conceded as locals? Because they keep on employing foreigners and just leaving us aside. Thank you.
Kina Agnes Mohumusi Hoyani. Kizoako kokosi Watundifogo Ogasi Merafu. Since 2004, in se hoti land claim, land claim. Twenty fourteen years after twenty fourteen, we have claim. Get claim me ente ya AME Church, Yakofosville, as a board member. So after claiming is seven years, ritilele kape, we have never get any letter, any meeting, any answer, for the previous six years. Today, I'm here again. In se kiri, I'm representing the board of the church. But I don't have a letter. I don't have a message. I don't have SMS. So na, kiri is better. Government irife our land back. Because nothing had happened between twenty years. Na myself, I need a land. Ki ba tlo aha crutch. Ki ba tlo jese fami. I need land. Lea my grandfather, I need it back. Compensation or not, we need land. Rileba akiba kokosi, we don't have a land. So, kiaka eutabaya Watundifogo Kokos. Ki alabo.
Good day. My name is Agnes Hoyani. I'm from Watundifogo Merafu. Since 2004, there have been land claims. Again, ten years later, 2014, there were land claims by the Fosville Church. Even after seven years, we have heard nothing. There's no letters, no meetings, no correspondence. I'm here as the representative of the board of the church, but I have no feedback since our claim. I am saying that government must give us our land back, because nothing has happened, nothing has changed in twenty years. I want to build a crutch. I want to farm. I want my grandfather's land back. So please, give us our land. Thank you.
Sanbonani Ikamalamuluyanda. I'm from Watundifogo Mokale City. Chairperson, we've made our submission in two parliament public hearings on the land question. We told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to eject the real struggles of black people. Will not solve the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay for the land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, build businesses. The expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution. There's some other places that state custodianship of land has taken place. The land in Mozambique is entirely owned by the state companies and the people are granted land use rights rather than ownership of the land. The land in China is under state custodianship, is available to users on basis of either long-term leaseholds or land use rights. About ninety percent of land in Botswana is either state-owned or tribal-owned. This land cannot be sold, rather it is leased from the state, from a tribal administration land port. The land in Ethiopia is owned by the state people and companies apply for land use rights for long-term leases from the state. In Singapore, seventy-five percent of the land is state-owned and held by the Singapore Land Authority, which acts as a custodian of the land. So ma ugu ymlshaba we too. Sanumanenisa apa waya way. Sis katele.
I'm just going to say the... Good day. My name is Luyanda. I'm from Watundifogo, Mokale City. The rest was in English. And then lastly said, bring back our land. Thank you.
Eh, kadi zumerisa, kali vito kina Tony Munaring, from Watundifogo, Mokale City, Representative EFF. Kidi melanale. Mola wakore constitution nation ite amendi we, section twenty-five. Because honano, kela bi tarai keta mo di public hearings. And I'm definitely sure, jore, public hearings, the previous public hearings, kubilewa majority about ibila votela, ibila juba jore, the constitution must be amended. So I don't know why, what's amegwa di mind games ika arona. Public hearing after public hearing. We thought jore, public hearing kaya zachala. And then, yako parliamente, yati skasiwa, and then kutiwa kana. So I don't understand, se di tla after. We need this land back, because we do eh di tabatabo, di land grab, es mama uwi le jore. Kui jua di land grab, kamuso, lefasela regisile regiswa batu. Kali regisasa batu. Jore regisasa batu bawa, bawa tuangantle. Es jore renzino phobic, we are not zinofobic. But watuwa tuangantle, we must know, we must understand, kudi pleka se bo blongoson. Baesa di crime, and kutata jore batriser. At the end of the day, jore safari ma South Africans. Kausana te ni, eh, di pleka se, se di filen batu, sa di land grabi, arifika kotsone. Halina sevisi li var. Next day, those people are going to the street. Basareka, abasareka, bata meja di lo sa governmente. Basuara di zela, ba feka ikonu. So, tabaya jore nerese retlafa, retluwa kantiwan. Na, se di ngata ka di zika landi. Akiba tlo jora sa fele, ki kellela fele jore. Tabayer, arsa nanzera sa di public hearings, se di ngata ngat. Kudlen tate mol, eh, awa kaje. Kokuto, eh, lefasile sinye kili, lefasile kela fami ni watuwa. And then soye le sinye kili. Papa, akiba tlo honanzi ki koochebel la gomoraku. Ah, honale fasile le sinye kili. South Africa is, eh, Britain. It's a five times more South Africa, five times. South Africa is the size of Belgium, France, Italy and Germany. Dili four, those countries. South Africa ya di feita. Two point four million square kilometers. Yes, size of South Africa eh. Ah, hona jore, eh, ah, hona mobatun baba, baba kasona, bahar, bahar, lefasile moti. Mama omu uwi le, aroba tlo jora crutch. It's not all about famine. Some people are about to be the business savon eh. Some people, ba, ba bata kope la, future. It's not all about famine. If someone out there is trying to do something positive ka life eh, jore lene, ekilete something, because me sebezi kaya. Thank you.
So my name is Tholi Munaring, from Mokale City. And I am very much in agreement with the bill, because I know that this is not the very first public hearings. We've had others before. And I do believe that this issue was discussed, maybe back at the parliament. But we keep on, again, coming back to conduct the same public hearings, talking about the same thing. Now, the end result of this is that now there have been some land grabs. People out there are now trying to do their own thing. And the painful part of the whole thing is that there are some people who own the land here, who are coming from outside the boundaries of South Africa. And also, these are the very people who are committing crime in our land. So it's very, very painful to see who actually suffers here. Someone is benefiting from outside, but we, people who belong to the land, don't seem to be benefiting in any way. Now, this has always been more like a domino effect. Now, people go, they strike for the land. They get arrested, and then they get released. In the long run, again, the same thing happens. They strike, because they are trying to strike for the land. So we need to stop that whole process to make sure that people do get what they want. And that is the application of land reform itself. Now, one of the gentlemen spoke earlier, who said he's from Kuzo. He said that in Kuzo, land has been totally spoiled because of the surrounding mines in the area and the land is so useless that it cannot be used. I don't believe that. So it's no such a thing. This idea is actually politicized. So if you look at some of the places such as Germany, Belgium, France, Italy, land is being put to a good use there. So why can't we follow their example? And also remember, land is not only about farming. People need land so that they can actually conduct some business on it, because they know exactly how to use it. So it's not always about farming. So with those words, I do feel that we also need to try and improve and do something better. Thank you, Chair.
Eh, manbulise, kunko keli, kokugana wazo. Eh, ikama, no tsetayo, ugsipo, meri kimakwaleso. In Merafungu, Watundi, Uedela, representative of ANC. As guneti beiti etesangomshaba. Eh, ogovernmente, angeka kwa sugu sanga da sonke. Uya ngai ta pana pana pa. As I was speaking now. Uedela, Watundi, kunai ifama lapaya. Enakuta ali fama ikona. Ya sponsorishwa zemaini. But, jowa is sponsorishwa zemaini, ya utolo kuti. Aku bine good management. Where's farmer is. Jowa imaini ya sponsoramchlambe, kubeni, pirro toftrieze. After eh eh eh, esosponsor simkile, and then ifama iya wa. Fa ibono tule. So, jangoku kuti, ogovernmente, uyazama pana pana pa. Patengege asna da sonke. Thank you very much.
Greetings, leaders. Greetings, my leaders. My name is Ikomukwaleso. I'm representing the ANC. The government cannot help all of us. As I speak, at Watundifogo, we have a farm there. We do work in that farm with the assistance of a mine that gives us a contract for three years. But once that mine, once that contract is over, then as a farm, the farm collapses. So the government cannot assist everyone. And I do support the vote. Thank you.
Tumelang, nakali vito kitabo Barwana, from Mokale Watundifogo. I guess I put in this bill. Pila pila, reborechiile, nseretsama telay, yakota di public hearing mu. Ra swamo marichi in reklamo, kape. Last ngereli westinere ya, raya ranfandin ruwile kape remo, ruwan tuiwan. Lefasela rola lutui tui. Lutui tui. Then maholu rawa itu oreki wo man. Joko pa lefasela rola. Retesi mo di jartin. Kena leva yirba wo ma itu mo jartin. Abana di pleka, bana wo mi kuku. Aba swava lata kape, baesa land grab. Leva bilisava tu kape, batuwa tu niya, bava lemat. So re kate si kota ma telay. Majority tunzuri, oluis. Pakopa, expropriation of land without compensation. Because, ababa erik, unemployment is very high. So re kate nseretlafa, re twa momarichi. Ritilele faha marich. Ritui le, momalu tui in kali covid. Re faha, joko pa lefasela arona pe. Please.
I am Tabo Barwana, from Watundifogo. We are saying that we are tired of this process. We have been having this process for a very long time. Repeating the same things over and over again. The majority of the people want expropriation. Our land has been stolen. We want our land back. Now, we are being subjected to the cold, exposed to COVID, coming to places and gatherings such as this one, to repeat the same things over and over again. We need to take action now. All that I'm saying is that we want our land back. We support expropriation.
We are true to those that we have identified.
Referize kaba tubarne nsererba kaili.
We are taking all the views that have been presented to us.
Retazi ya di inkazu otle se di seti ndikare si tui, re di filwe.
When we sit at the end of June, after having gone to the nine provinces.
Faranamoho, kediya se, tebu siho, eh, fifing, moraku har di koloka di provinces tule.
We will discuss and consider all the views in front of us.
Retla buisa na rebere tzi ya di inkazu otle, se di limfope la harona.
Then we prepare a report for the parliament.
Me retla bakanya peho, re bakanya za parliamente.
Issues that have been raised relating to other departments.
Di ntlakosamera ro eh tlare si tui, eh, ma bapi le ma fapa ama we.
Like the issue of land claims.
Jaka, khangya, eh, ho, kitopobtuelo, ya lefasile, ya kubusediwa lefasile.
Because that one relates to the Department of Rural Development.
Ga hora kanyew ele ba nele, le fapa, tlabololwa ya ma fasi, ama khai.
We will ensure that it reaches that office.
Retla netefaza jore di kantew, re di fiti seza ku ofisi nieo, ki hora hasitza arona. Karakela eh eh land claim. Karatla la, eh, eh, land claim.
Siabonga ka kulu.
Real ebo.
Thank you, the meeting is adjourned.
Eh, kopano efedile, real ebo.